I would like to call this meeting of the Finance Committee to order. It's May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Present that's on the committee is Mr. Craig Lyer, Mrs. Trey Britt, Mr. Terry Lotler. Also present is Mrs. Gentry and Mr. Randy Lawson. And we're gonna have Melissa, she is joining us from Zoom. All right, the first order of business, we have invocation by Mr. Terry Lotler. Is it on? All right.
Father God, thank you for this day. Lord, we unite in our mission and our responsibility to manage these resources in the best way that we know how. Please grant us the patience, understanding, and open-mindedness that we need to engage in discussion, to strive to find common ground, and to do what's best for the public schools of Robinson County. In these things, we pray in your name, amen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terry. First order of business is Kelly Education Substitute Staffing by Miss Melissa Thompson and Miss Erica Sessner.
Good evening Superintendent Williamson, as well as all members of the board that are present. Tonight, we would like to talk to you about Kelly Education Substitute Staffing. As you know, we have been spending, we're up to like four point five million dollars in substitute cost. And we're having a lot of issues with our current program. We have about six hundred names on our substitute list, and we're currently using Smartfind to call these people. The issue is they either don't answer, or they don't show up, or people aren't calling in early enough. But either way, we're having to use staff within the school. Teachers are having to stand in classrooms for other teachers when they're absent. It might be a teacher's planning. We're pulling TAs, and that affects our children, the learning, as well as our teachers, causing burnout with them because they're being pulled every which way. So I'd like to mention some things about Kelly Education. So with Kelly Education, substitutes would be able to work five days a week, whereas now they can only work four days a week because of the insurance. We're not able to provide insurance. With Kelly, they would. All substitutes would have access to benefits, including medical, dental, vision, life insurance, wellness, and EAP. The pay will remain the same as approved by PSRC Board. Our substitutes would get a paycheck every week. Where right now, if they start, when school starts, when the children start those in the middle of August or the end of August, they don't get a paycheck until the end of September. That's their first paycheck, correct? So this way, they would get a weekly paycheck as well as those benefits. Kelly also has an ACE program, which is Accelerated Certification and Education. As you know, we have TAs to teachers. Well, this is a program for substitutes. And they would be in a program, if they wish, under Kelly, which would lead them to be full-time certified teachers. They provide a career pathway for those substitutes. And they work at their own pace while still earning their wage. They're rewarded and recognized. For example, hard-to-fill assignments, there's a bonus for those substitutes who will take those hard-to-fill positions. Kelly also provides training for all substitutes at no cost. It's a part of the onboarding process. Wanted to let you know that Kelly has been around since nineteen ninety-seven, and they delivered their first education staffing solution by partnering with Gulfport School District in Mississippi, and they are still a partner today after twenty-five years. They focus exclusively on pre-K twelve education, special needs, early childhood education, and higher education, as well as tutoring. They serve ten thousand elementary, middle, and high schools across thirty-seven states. The contract would be a year-to-year contract. And if we see that one of the substitutes under Kelly would like, we would like to employ that person, their overall request would be ninety days. But they said give them thirty days, and then we could actually employ them at no cost. But they do ask us to let them sub for thirty days, and then that allows them recruiting time as well. Ms. Erica is gonna give you some additional background or additional information.
Thank you. As Ms. Thompson indicated, our sub-costs have just exploded since the pandemic. Pre-pandemic, we had a higher fill rate. We had more subs willing to take jobs. Post-pandemic, as she indicated, where we're really seeing an increase in the cost is the teacher assistants who are filling in as subs for the teachers. There's anywhere from fifty to sixty dollars additional per day costs plus benefits, times the number of days that they sub. That's really challenged us this year and increased our sub-cost tremendously. And as Ms. Thompson indicated, some of the great selling points are weekly paychecks. Once we start paying Kelly Education, if any of our subs are retirees, they no longer would be subject to a earnings cap because they're not working with the state agency. Kelly Education would be the employer of record, so they would no longer have to monitor their earnings since Kelly Education is not considered a state agency. As far as pricing goes, there's a sheet with a cost comparison analysis that indicates there should be a savings as we move forward. One of the things to keep in mind, though, is right now, our fill rate is a little over seventy percent. Kelly Education's goal is to get that fill rate to ninety percent. So of all the jobs that we get, only seventy percent of those are filled by a substitute teacher. The rest are either covered by other existing employees. So even with that, we should see savings each year as we move forward with this. And definitely, the pros are there with the benefits option. Now, there may be some type of waiting period for that. We haven't gotten to those details, but we will certainly get that. But that is not something presently with Affordable Care Act that we are able to afford to offer our substitute teachers. The Affordable Care Act compliance is no longer a Public Schools of Robinson County issue that would fall on Kelly Education. Unemployment costs, workers' compensation costs, all of those would fall again to Kelly Education. Any questions that we can answer about the proposal?
Chair, may I?
Yes.
Erica, talk with us in terms of out-of-state, in-state, your reference check, what you found out in terms of reliability, that whole conversation, please.
I'm a little, tell me again.
Your reference check on this company?
Oh, on the company, I thought you meant for the employees, yes, I apologize. So Nash County is a district within the state of North Carolina that uses Kelly Education, and this is their third year. And I spoke directly with the Finance Department, and they had nothing but positive things to say. They have a lot of teacher vacancies there. So proportionally, they've been able to increase their fill rate, and that Kelly is always there. The implementation part was a great transition, and they've heard, had nothing but good response from their subs as they move forward with this program. Now, they operate out of eleven hundred different districts. Most of them are in other states. Georgia, South Carolina, there's several. Yeah. Thirty-seven different states they operate out of, and their focus is substitute teachers.
Let me ask you. The contract will not be serviced out of state. There is an in-state rep that will service this contract, correct?
Correct. He's out of Charlotte, Alex, what's his last name?
I have all of his information.
Yes, and there's a team.
Yeah, it's a very different, like, T E I X. I can't pronounce it, I'll kill me if I say it.
I got, I got a question. I did a little bit of research on Kelly Education Services, and it said that, you know, all the substitutes and stuff, we have to take some kind of test or get some kind of certification from them? Now, I'm only worrying about these people that's been our long-term subs and stuff, as they helped us through and through. Would they get weeded out? Would they get kind of weed out? They don't pass their certification or whatever. We talk about our long-term subs here, that's been with us through thick and thin.
So as part of the implementation, there would be a list of staff that are falling to that category, Mr. Avante, that have traditionally been here, considered long-term, or that, working with the principals, that they value them being a part of their school. We can give them that list, and they would automatically place in the program. That's what, Mr. Alex, and his last name is Texiara.
All right, also, I think, Miss Melissa Ocean got a question? Melissa, turn your mic on. All right, well, Mr. Craig got a question, I go to Mr. Craig, we'll come back.
And actually, I had two or three, and I left the paper at home. Is this mic on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When we're talking about what Mr. Avante said, these long-term subs, these people we got, they only gonna sub at Deep Branch and Caramel. That's where they gonna sub. Has this company given you any indication of how they would address that? And they might be somebody that's subbed there for five or ten years, and they're not going to other places. So when they get up with this big number, how would those folks be handled for us? Have they gave any indication of that?
We haven't gotten to that step, but I know they will ask the subs, you know, which schools, if they have a preference to where they'd like to go.
Okay. Next question, we dealing with this company. Who has control over that sub on that campus? Will it still be our principals? Other words, can the principal go there, if subs not doing what they're supposed to that day? You need to leave this campus.
Right.
Principal still be able to do that?
Well, first they notify the district, and then we give them, we fill them back.
You do it down here, so the way we did that in the past would still be done. We wouldn't be having to wait on quote-unquote "a company" to come in here and tell us we can handle a situation like that at school.
No, sir.
Okay. Let me see if I can find another, and I might ask you to come back, because, like I said, I had a list. And I look at these numbers here about the cost and all, and I'll be honest, they're just confusing to me. And Ms. Erica, I'm sure you probably could walk me through it. But with the company doing this, I'm sure somewhere or another, we're paying that company to do it.
That's correct, yes, sir.
We're gonna pay them to provide this service to us.
That's correct.
So there's gonna be a cost, whatever, wherever we can, we can look at what that cost is. Now, I know if they say it's a year contract, if we do something like this, and we find out after three months, it's just not working. Can we get out of it? Or is it for the year?
Yes, and I just asked that question today, and he said thirty days. They just need a thirty-day.
Thirty-day notice?
Notice.
And they wouldn't charge no kind of penalty or nothing, we could walk away?
I know we can walk away. I have to ask if there's a penalty. But he did say we can, you know.
Walk away.
Yeah, we can walk away from it, but they just need a thirty day. And he said other companies do not offer that.
Right.
But they do.
And I'm not saying for or against it right now, I might talk about a little bit about more information. But we know this, and I ain't anybody listening. The substitute issue is not something that's just happened. People might want to blame current things or whatever. We've had issue with subs for twenty-five years. And not only us, everybody. It's just an issue about getting people and finding people. So, you know, if this is a way that we can look at it, so be it. But I have some more questions maybe later, go on to somebody else now.
All right, we gonna go to Melissa, then we're gonna go to you, Terry.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Okay, so my first question is, as far as the subs, would the Kelly Services team like call them in or schedule them where they want them to be? Or do they still have preference?
They will have that preference, just like now. They will actually sign up, they will have a list of absences, and they can sign up for the ones that they want, the substitute can.
Okay, so in that will be determining the hours they work will be determined by the need, by the school's need, right?
Yes.
Okay, so they're gonna still use like a system like what we use now to call the subs, like the little, I guess, the alcohol that calls them and see if they're available?
It will be very similar, but we will have a real-life person monitoring that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So through Kelly Education, we'll use a program called Red Rover, and it gives the teachers additional options that they don't currently have with Smartfind. They can text, email, call. But everything will be funneled through a live person, as Ms. Melissa indicated. They'll have availability for a live person from five-thirty a.m. to seven p.m. So if they don't want to send an email, they don't want to log in, which they can do that as well. They can physically call and talk to someone. But one of the things that really we have to start talking, if it's approved with our principals, is all the absences have to go through this company. They only get paid based on the jobs that they fill. So if there are any sub needs that are not filled, we will not be billed for that. And we'll have the teacher absences to do a cross-reference for that.
All right, Mr. Terry.
So you indicated that sub pay would stay the same, is that gross and net?
We can assume it's net because otherwise, but it would depend on what benefits the person signs up for. So no, it would not be the net pay because we don't currently offer benefits. So I'm sure they would have some type of deductible or, what's the word I'm looking for?
Deductions and insurance.
Right, for their insurance. They'll have maybe some kind of premium each month that they'll have to cover.
So they'll have the opportunity to sign up for a similar insurance package as our regular teachers?
We don't know, currently know the company, if it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, like it is with the state health plan. But yes, they will be offered health insurance, medical, dental, vision, life insurance, wellness, and EAP employee assistance program.
Employee assistance program, okay. So we're gonna have to pay, based on my understanding, we'll have to pay X amount of dollars like per sub that they, that they put into place for a day.
That's great.
Okay. And we're also figuring our savings into this fill rate. Or we're doing some soft cost, saying if we don't find a sub, then a teacher has to, or somebody has to cover this room. And right now, it's costing us lost time for salaried employees, and that's the way we're figuring some of our savings?
Correct, there's some of it that's not quantitative because it's a person's time that's already getting a check in another area. And some of that is the time it takes for the finance staff to work with the bookkeepers, to go through the absences every month, go over to sub sheets, write the checks, mail the checks, sign up for direct deposit, all of those things are built into that soft cost.
I don't work in public schools every day, and, well, I guess none of us on the board do, but some of us have worked in public schools before. I honestly don't know, I mean, I have no idea how subs work. I would like to see really like what happens now versus, you know, and who does that? Okay, so a teacher says I'm gonna be out tomorrow, and then this, this, and this happens. And you know what all of those points are before subs actually in the classroom? I'd like to see what happens, you know, I'd like to see that in like a flowchart versus what would happen here. So who is just taking, who's this relieving? Is it relieving board staff? Is it relieving principals?
They're sticking them here because someone's got to be in there with those children. And a lot of times, teachers call in first thing that morning.
Presently, a teacher can call into their school and request a sub. They can log into Smartfind and indicate it's a sickness, what type of absentee it is. And in Smartfind, they currently can request a specific sub if they choose to or not. Or they can send, communicate with their principal. We're gonna tell them everything has to funnel through Red Rover and/or Kelly. They can contact Kelly, and Kelly will place it in Red Rover. But everything will be funneled through Kelly Education to capture that data more accurately.
This is smoke and mirrors, I'll never be able to remember what you just said. You named Smartfind, Red Rover, and Kelly, and this system's gonna relieve, it's gonna take the place of all of that?
Red Rover works with Kelly Education, so it'll be incorporated, like Smartfind and us. Red Rover will take over for Smartfind, what we're using now, and it'll be, it works integrates with Kelly Education with their software.
I'm not gonna say, I understand, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Randy, then you're next, Mrs. Gentry.
I know Mr. Craig mentioned this is a year-to-year and can be canceled in thirty days' notice, right? All right.
Correct.
Is this for long-term subs, day-to-day subs, all inclusive?
All of the above.
Okay. And this is like a third-party company, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, my final question. I know y'all sit down, or I know Ms. Erica has, I hope she has. Have you sit down and done the math pertaining to what we've got now? Or tell me if I'm missing it here, the difference in the money we would save, but yet what Kelly would make? And what you've got right now, what you've been through this year as of Friday, this past Friday? Well, or not to say that, the four point five million versus where are we at? Would it cost us seven million, or would we be?
No, sir, it would not cost seven million.
Okay, so somebody's done the math, I want to know some numbers.
Right, and that's what this cost comparison is. Even though there's soft costs built into that, this is valid. So projected could be anywhere from, say, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, depending on the fill rate. That's the variable that we don't know. But that could be the savings depending on whether they fall in the seventies or the ninety percent fill rate. But either way, we should see a savings.
Even if we got to eighty-five percent?
Even if we got to eighty-five percent. Because what we're doing now is, when we don't have that sub field, we're using TAs, and that's where it's costing us that extra money. So we hope that's gonna go away, and we won't have that additional cost we're paying for a TA. It's much more cost-effective for a sub to be in that position than for us to pull a TA from a classroom.
Erica moves on. So that's the cost for pulling the TA.
Erica moves on. So that's the cost for pulling the TA, is we have to pay them beginning teacher daily rate.
Correct, they go from making whatever their daily rate is as a TA to a hundred and seventy-two dollars and some change. Which is the daily rate of pay for a beginning classroom teacher. So depending on what they make, it can be anywhere from fifty to sixty dollars more on top of what we're already paying. Plus, when a TA does it, we also have the matching retirement, because that TA is contributing to the retirement system where our substitutes are not.
All right, we're gonna have, Mrs. Gentry, you're not. You got your, you got your mic on? It's not on, you don't got your card, Mrs. Gentry? He's not coming on. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Terry then I'm gonna come back to you, Mr. Gentry.
All right, my question is, I see the benefit of it, exactly what you're saying, but my question is, is this contract that we're entering, has Mr. Schwartz looked over it, has any at all?
He has received it as part of the packet that was sent out, yes.
Also, I want, I want to ask you, Erica, while we get Mrs. Gentry going. You see, I got a two-part, two-part question. Number one, you said we are, we are at seventy percent retention rate from, not retention rate from the subs.
The feel rate.
The feel rate, and then we'll get us to ninety percent. There, what's called projections, get us to ninety percent.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many more people do you think we could attract to come from surrounding counties and stuff to come sub here? That, that, that's, that's number one. How many people you think is worth us paying the money to get people? How many people you think will come here?
That's actually a conversation that we had because most districts that I'm aware of pay their subs monthly, so the weekly pay. The option to have benefits, I think that's gonna be major and it could definitely attract people that may already live here. But go sub somewhere else and vice versa. I, it's kind of hard for me to put a quantitative amount on it, but we certainly have discussed that as an option.
Yes, okay, we weekly pay will will get them here, but I don't think, you know, from me crunching numbers together. The benefits and stuff, I don't know if they'll be able to afford kind of benefits, the way healthcare and the way stuff is, I don't know. Just putting numbers and stuff together, so I understand about the weekly pay. Another thing, another question I got to ask is two-part, is you say everyone will use Red Rover or Kelly to.
Red Rover will be a software within Kelly.
Yes, so are we not making everyone use the current software that we have? Cause I know different people are doing different things. What would be our rate and would make everyone use the current software that we have?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I wish I had a good answer for it, but the answer is no, it's not being used in a consistent basis. The teacher does have a lot of options, but for some of our employees, they just rather call the school and work with. Or call their principal rather than going in and using it. We really haven't had a way to discourage that from happening. Cause we really want to help our teachers as much as possible, so we've kind of given them that comfort level of. Whatever's comfortable for you, we'll make it work on our end, but moving forward, there will be multiple options on how they can reach out to Kelly. Including calling and with a live person, so there shouldn't be an option that someone doesn't like to do. Or is hard or difficult for someone to do. We're not gonna force everybody to log into a system and all of that. We'll have different things available. So everyone should be at a comfort level where there shouldn't be a question about using this product.
All right, now, Mrs. Gentry, Mrs. Gentry, then I'm gonna have Terry, then I'm having you, Dr. Mania, okay?
How, how will the, the pool of candidates be set up, organized? You know, I heard the discussion earlier about giving some credence or priority to long-term. Substitutes or substitutes who have been available for a long time. But to my thinking, it, it would take some time in order to build a significant pool of possible candidates. It looks like that's gonna be a progressive over time situation.
So we will give them our pool of candidate, well, of substitutes that we have approved, which is about six hundred plus. They will get that and then they will be contacted by Kelly for future training and the process. And that's why it's so important that if we're gonna go with this program, that it be approved tomorrow night, so we can go ahead and get started and have it set up. When school starts. They've told us that we are in a position right now. That if we can get it approved, that we do have time to get everything set up, but they will start with our pool. And they will accept those people. And we have six hundred plus, but they're just not working. And see, that's gonna be monitored and it's gonna help weed out some of those who are signing up to be a substitute. Just so they can draw unemployment. And that's sad to say, but it's happening. And then when we call them, they're declining the call. Or they're declining the job. They're not accepting the call and declining the jobs. This way it'll be monitored more closely.
So I, I, I hope I'm hearing correctly that in establishing this initial, initial pool of candidates, there will be some screening process. Based upon their history and what's happened before.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I have, I have a second question, Mr. Chair. I, I know from experience that a significant number of substitutes are needed. Sometimes on a very short notice, like six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning. I know from appearance that a significant number are needed. Is this company ready and willing to handle that kind of situation? Or will it be like you said earlier, a direct call from a teacher who's gonna be absent that day?
We have a person, there will be a person who goes live at five thirty in the morning and works till seven at night. Monitoring that system.
Terry, hold up.
So you mentioned there's, there's several different paths for an individual to, to become a sub. Like, you know, what happens on a daily basis, different teachers may have different paths to get to a sub at this point. Will this system completely replace all of that? Or will we still say, well, this person likes to do it this way, this person likes to do it that way?
So they will have different options. For example, Ms. Erica said, you know, they can text, they can call in, they can go online and just put that in. And so they will have those different options. Is that, does that answer your question?
But it'll all be through this system?
Yes, Red Rover instead of Smart Find, and Red Rover will be a part of the Kelly Education. Red Rover will take the place of Smart Find, which will be a part of Kelly Education. So they will be able to monitor that Red Rover. Kelly will be able to monitor and run reports.
So we won't have, we won't have any, we won't have any subs or any teachers saying, I don't want to change. This is the way I've always done it over here, and I'd just like to pick up the phone and call the principal and say, hey, such is, such is gonna be subbing for me today. Or I, I don't even know how it works now.
And that's the one thing we've tried to get, get away from, is the sub calling somebody to come in. They, instead of using the Smart Find system, some people are still doing that, and so that's why the system isn't working. But you're right, they will not have that choice, but they can choose the classroom, the substitutes can choose the classrooms. And if the, if the teacher knows she's gonna be out, he or she, then they can let such and such know, I'm gonna be out if you want to apply for that job.
I'm just apprehensive about, about giving another option instead of, I would, I would, I would be more comfortable. If we could, and I know it's probably tough to definitively, definitively say that everybody's gonna move towards this and, you know. Instantly, but I'm just apprehensive about putting something else on the schools. Because this is another thing that somebody's gonna have to train for and learn how to use and all of that good stuff.
It should be a lot like what they're doing now. It's just a different company. But they're gonna be forced to use the system because we are not gonna have substitutes. So if you call Melissa Thompson to sub, you better be able to pay Melissa Thompson if she's not a Kelly employee.
So this is like a staffing, almost like a staffing agency?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So I think that's the difference in what we're doing now. If a sub comes in and they didn't use the system, obviously, if the school reports it to us that they were, we can still pay them. But as Ms. Thompson indicated, that won't be the case. If their information's not within Kelly Education, they won't have anything on file to pay them. And that will have to be reconciled weekly with the weekly paychecks.
I would like to have an opportunity to, to talk with some principals, really, to see what their thoughts are on this. But that's, that's just me. This is another one of those situations where it sounds like if we don't do it today, if we don't do it tomorrow, we're not gonna have it. In place in time, and I don't want to do this half-handedly and in a hurry. And then the fall, we're having to answer all these questions, see, you know, people saying, well, y'all's put one more thing on us. That's what I'm apprehensive about at this point. And, and I just don't feel like I know enough about the process. If I could see this in a flow chart, or say, this is what happens now. This is where this person has to do something manually, and this is where this system is gonna take the place of all of those manual processes. That's something I'd like to see. And what about Ms. Linda Locklear? And I don't even know if that's a real person, I'm just throwing it. What about this person that's been, not that Linda Locklear, a different one? No, yeah, I'm talking about a different one. What if she's, what if this individual's been substituting for twenty-five or thirty years? And she's always done it the same way, and she don't use computers or whatever. You know, how, how, how are we gonna make that, that transition in an efficient manner that's not gonna put additional work on any employee?
So the, the phone will always be an option. There will always be an option to call someone. There will be four options to, to get a sub field. It'll be a text, an email, a call, or logging into Red Rover. Those will be the four options. So typically, the teacher has to do that, not the sub themselves. And like we've indicated, Kelly has told us there will be an option for a preference. So if that teacher calls into Kelly, I'm, I'm guessing she would say, and of course, we hadn't got to these details yet. I want Mr. Terry Locklear to sub for me today. This is her, their information, make sure they're in the system, those kind of things. There will always be an option for a phone call.
If you can show me on some kind of chart or diagram where it's, where this is saving us time and money, I'm, I'm all for it. And I know time is money, so even if it costs a little bit more, if you can show that it's saving this X amount of time, then let's go with it. But I'm just, I don't, I don't, I can't grasp the, the process and just by us, you know, just by this conversation. But I'll hush and let somebody else say something. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak to the principals. You said you'd like to have time to speak with principals. This is a complaint we have from day one. We can't find subs, we can't find subs. They're putting anybody in the classroom so that someone is watching those children. I've heard some horror stories. We need help with substitutes. We are desperate for help with substitutes. We've let more substitutes go this year than we've ever let go because they are not capable. Of making sure our students are safe. And our process for hiring is the same. But we need help with substitutes, and I think if you ask any principal, I think they will tell you the same thing. Yes, we need something. We don't know that this is gonna be the right solution, but we need change. We need to try something because what we're doing is not working.
Dotley Bingham, you was.
Thank you, sir. I do apologize for being late, but some creature parked a big truck behind my car and I had no key, I couldn't get out. But anyway, if I repeat something that you said, please forgive me. I do want to, this is unusual, agree with Terry. I totally agree with him. I learned my lesson with eCurriculum in Eureka when it was presented one day. And we had to approve it the next day. I said, I would never do that again. I need all the clarification I can get. First of all, when, when we adopted the software, the last, the one that we're presently using. It was to solve all of our problems with substitutes, and it did, and, and as, as these ladies have told you, we still have any issues. I think that we need more time to digest this process because I researched it once I, Mr. Vontae. Got me up to speed and told me what was gonna be on the agenda and it forced me to look at the agenda. I researched it, and there are some downsides about the services that this company provides to those subs. There are some upsides as well. So I think we need, in my opinion, this is totally my opinion, and I'm one member. That we need some time to digest and research this. As far as being speedy about we need to do it right now, that's not true. There's a school system that an article Vontae and I read today, they adopted the program in the middle of the school year. So that time is not of the essence as far as if you don't do it now, it's not gonna be done. They're, they're willing to work with us at any time we decide to do this, and I know it would be nice to have it ready the beginning of school. I just think that this is a new, totally, a new way of operating. We need time to be able to answer questions to our teachers. We need total input. And we do not need to jump onto a brand-new system without totally understanding, being able to answer. To our teachers, principals, and everything, because there are problems with this new system, just like there would be with any new system. And we need to be able to at least know as board members, I think, how to at least address principals and teachers with it. Because there are in some of the research, some of the dedicated substitutes, they lost some days. They didn't get to work as much with some of the research. Now, these were places where they had a lot of substitutes that wanted to work. And I'm like, Vontae, I don't know, we're gonna have a lot of outside substitutes. We may or may not, I don't know. But that's just my opinion that I would not vote to approve it tomorrow night. I just need more time to look at it. Cause I will not get another situation like I did with Eureka and eCurriculum. I want time to at least preview something this major. Thank you.
Miss Terry, did you have a question? You good? She took, all right, now we're gonna go to Mr. Craig. Then we're gonna go to Melissa, then you, Terry, again.
Somewhat reiterating again in a minute what Dr. Mania said. Mr. Terry, since you hadn't been there, I will say this. One of the biggest benefits to a principal in the morning at seven thirty, when you need five subs and you got two. That's real life, and I just use that. If it's Lumberton, San Antonio, higher per nail sweat, they might need fifteen and they got six. And you're looking for who's free first period, you're looking for whatever to put a warm body in that classroom. That's what it amounts to. Now, if this program would take care of that, I'd stand up and vote for it tonight, having been there and saying that, cause it, it is a problem. It is a problem. Now, from, from what I've heard. I do have reservations about reading this the weekend and then hearing information tonight. Then making an approval on this or anything. And Ms. Erica, Ms. Thompson, y'all have been asked a lot of questions and you've answered them. What I would ask is if somewhere or others could come back and take those questions and try to answer those, I like seeing stuff on paper. Bring in some principals and ask them who are out there now every day, you know, what they think about this. And as much as we could streamline something to where, there's not a lot of options on how you would get a sub. Now, granted, we got the person that's subbed for twenty-five years or twenty years and they won't want to do something new. But the options on how you get one, you know, if that could be streamlined, I think it would help. But bring those people in. Word is, we got a meeting tomorrow night, that meeting's gonna be recessed. So if stuff was brought in and it was brought back at the recess meeting where we could all look at it again. And just sit there and I'm gonna say, look at it, that's another three or four weeks from now. The where it's not like we're looking at it now and making a recommendation to the board, because to be honest with you, you know, I have some more questions. And I will say this, we're talking about savings. Now, if this program saves fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, don't get me wrong. I'm gonna say with subs, that's not a lot of money. I'm going to say with subs, that's not a lot of money. And, and saving 50 or 100,000, I will say this, that's not what I think this program is looking at trying to help us with. That's not what I'm looking at. If it saves us 100,000. I'm looking more on the fact that that's putting somebody in a classroom as opposed to saving that money. Now, if you're talking about saving half a million dollars or a million dollars, then we're getting somewhere to meet it significant. But if we're going to save 100,000 during this year, that's, that's okay. But if that puts somebody in a classroom 90% of the time, instead of having to go get that TA or that teacher who's got first period planning, that then they're upset the rest of the day because they had to cover a class. And I've been there. I've done it. You don't like it. You don't like it. Then you can't do things you had planned to do. That's the advantage of this program if it works like that. And to be honest, we wouldn't know if it works that way till we try. And then I would like to go back to that if the program's this good and there's no set time that we got to start it tomorrow, or we got to start it July the 1st. If we could start it August the 1st. If they're that good and we take time to look at it, I think they would be willing to accept us coming on board. Now, it might cost some more work, but trying to get it ready and it might not be exactly ready to go the first day of school. But if it got us to the point of we're getting people in the classroom, it would be an advantage. So now my thoughts is, like I said, bring back some information. Answer these questions that we've heard verbal answers to tonight. I'd say bring in a couple of principals. Get up whoever you want to get. Let them come talk to us about, they could tell us, Mr. Terry, what's it like every day trying to get a sub? You know, what kind of problems do you run into? They could answer that question to us. You might get a teacher or two. How are you getting subs now? And that way, we're going to get input from everybody and then we make a decision on which way to go from it. Especially if the company says, we can do it in July, we can do it in August. Of course, it would be easier for us if you do it now. But we still could do it then and implement it.
Alright, um, we got the, Dr. Williams, then we're going to go with you, Terry.
Uh, point of clarification, um, the way that we understand, I understand it, it would actually be less work on the buildings, right? That the clerical staff, they would no longer be responsible for dealing with subs, period.
That's correct. Um, Kelly would have a dedicated person they could call. So the, the secretary or payroll clerk, whoever it is, and it's different in every building, would not have to assume that responsibility.
And then, um, effective teacher training, which I think that, Miss Von Tei, you kind of made reference to. Will we still be responsible for effective teacher training or they would be responsible?
Kelly would be responsible. They will provide at no cost to the substitutes their training. And also, when you take that off of the principal and the secretary trying to find someone to go in that classroom, there's also hard feelings when the principal is doing 15 things at one time and she looks at the counselor and says, please go tell Melissa to go cover Erica's class. And then she gets mad. Melissa gets mad because the counselor's telling her what to do. And it's not because the principal is putting her in charge, so to speak, but there's 25 things going on that morning. And she's just asking, please get Melissa to cover for Erica or whatever. So that's also another problem that they have. Um, they don't like being told to go cover a class by anyone other than the principal. And the principal doesn't have time to find subs in the mornings or coverage.
And so our current subs who are certified through effective teacher training, they would not have to be recertified. They were rolled over. It's simply the new subs that would have to go through the effective teacher training, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Great. And then my question is to the full board, would it be your pleasure, uh, for tomorrow, if we could bring the rep in and give you a chance to hear directly and address some of those questions to the rep? Would that be helpful in this process?
Even principals? If we could bring in some principals?
I, I don't, I don't think it'd hurt, it'd hurt the situation, but I'm thinking what more, what, what more I'm hearing from, um, from the, the people that's here, that we need more time to research, uh, research this. Uh, we, we got, we just need more time to research the pros and cons. I mean, seems like, seems like a good program, but at the time, we got to look at the pros and cons, what's good about it, what's bad about it. And also, you know, my question is, before I get to you, Ms. Terry, is, okay. We talk about, we, we talk about Smart Find and stuff. Have we exhausted everything to make Smart Find better? Have we did anything, made any changes to that when we, when we first introduced it? Have we made any changes or stuff to it?
We don't own the product, so there's not a lot of changes we can make to it. And as it stands, it just doesn't provide the service that we need.
Alright, yeah. Oh, I got a follow-up question. Also, you said we have one person, um, dedicated to us from, from, from Charlotte or from wherever. It don't matter. But, okay. And we got six, we said roughly, we got 600 subs. Roughly, if you get 100 phone calls in the morning or what's called, would that, would it be that one person taking all these phone calls? As far as the substitutes, as far as anybody?
Let me, uh, rephrase that. The dedicated person will be in Robinson County. We also will have a rep with the company that's in North Carolina, but the day-to-day, it will be a person in Robinson County. They haven't really indicated. It could be like a call center. I'm not really sure. But most of the time, the subs do, uh, submit their, their absences different ways. I don't know right now because that's not some, not data that Smart Find can give us because everybody's not using it. I don't have a breakdown of how many call versus how many login versus how many call the principal, um, to know. But everybody is not calling in for their absence the same way.
Alright, okay. Now, is there any kind of way we can make everybody do the same thing with the current system that we have?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know that for certain, but it, it hasn't really worked. Like I say, with the fact that the subs continuously deny the calls and we don't have a way, a system in place like for any kind of consequence for that.
Alright, this is my, this is my, this follow-up question. So with the new system, if they deny the calls, it'd be the same thing we going through now, correct? Or not?
They'll put a cap on it as based on whatever we decide. After so many calls are declined, they'll no longer be allowed to sub.
Alright, Mr. Terry.
Thank you. Let's just take a step back for a minute. Let's just all breathe and, and take a step back for a minute. And just think that, I, I don't think, um, you know, there's unique situations all over the place. But we're talking about substitute teachers. And in my mind, a substitute teacher is a, is a teacher that comes in for another teacher that's sick. And then that teacher may be sick for a few days and then that sub goes back home. And then there was something called long-term subs, which is, that's new to me. Um, I mean, I've, I've been hearing about long-term subs the last maybe 10 or 12 years or so. I'm some, I'm sure some of you can go back a little bit further. And this is not a knock on subs. I thank God that we have individuals willing to come in and serve as subs for us. But now we're discussing substitute teachers as, um, you know, being a substitute teacher as a career. You know, we're talking about insurance and, and, you know, they're going through a different company and, and that's, I just want you to conceptualize that for a minute. When you were in school, did you ever think that, did you ever think that we would be discussing a sub in terms of a career? And I know that there's some that work every day. And like I said, I'm, I'm glad to have them, but my challenge is that I just don't feel like we are, um, addressing the root of the, uh, of the issue. And I know there's staffing, there's, there's, uh, staffing shortages and teacher shortages all over the place. But I would like to hear more about what we're doing. And I know there's been changes in the last few years. What are we doing differently now than we did years ago to recruit and retain teachers? What are we really, how are we focusing on recruitment and retention? Are, are, um, are we doing more or less to celebrate the current employees that we have? You know, I never want to be in envi, in an environment, and I may be sometimes here. I don't want to be, uh, in a situation where I'm tolerated, you know, rather than celebrated. And, and as employees, that's what, uh, that's what everyone should feel like when they go to their jobs. Because these certified individuals have options. They can work anywhere in the state. Now, okay, that's my little spiel about that. Now also, the, just the mere fact that, that we have this proposal, you know, that's being brought to us, we should be able to, we should get access to a set of numbers that says, these are the highly, we have this number seats available for highly qualified teachers. This is how many we have. This is how many long-term subs we have. This is how many, um, students we have that have, that are in classes with long-term subs. So we can have, uh, if we can have the conversation about needing a system just to manage our subs, we should have a, we should have access to the numbers telling us, bam, here's how many highly qualified teachers you have. And when somebody says, there's a difference between a certified teacher and a highly qualified teacher. A substitute counts as a, as a, as a certified teacher. A substitute is a, uh, is a certified teacher. But in our context, we should be thinking about delineating between, uh, when we look at numbers, delineating between highly qualified teachers versus, um, certified substitutes. And, and, and for, for launching a program like this, um, you know, moving forward, I suggest that we pilot. I suggest that we, we get maybe if there's a principal who wants to volunteer to take something like, to take something like this on, maybe use it for a month or whatever. I work with these companies every day. I guarantee you, they'll give you access to this product for a month or two months or whatever for free. They'll, they'll let you pilot it on a few schools. I don't think having a, maybe having a principal come in tomorrow night will be fine. But I would rather have a principal to come in to say, I've used it for X amount of time and this is my thoughts. That's just me. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarity, the company has not told us if we don't make a decision this month that we can't be a part of this company, that we can't adopt this program. Just for clarification, the only thing we're saying is the training could take place this summer and everything could be put place in August. If it's your will not to go with this company, that's fine, but there will be no change. And we will start the new year out the same way that we've always started the new year out. We will continue to have problems with subs. They can only work four days. We will not be able to offer them benefits. And as I was saying, and a, a substitute is not a certified teacher. A certified teacher is a person with a license from the Department of Public Instruction who has completed that program. A substitute is someone who has, um, completed the effective teacher's training. And that's what makes them eligible to be a substitute unless they are a retired teacher or a licensed teacher who has just left the business and has come back to do some substitute work. But, um, if this is your will, this is where we will leave it. But, um, all we're asking for is some change. I think the substitutes will love the new program. When we talk about substitutes being career people, we've got some substitutes out there that will put some of our teachers in the wind. But they don't want to be a teacher. They do not want to go back to college and get a degree. But we've got some substitutes out there that can be teachers and, and are doing a better job than some of our teachers. So to say, yes, it's a career, and then this company is going to give them a pathway to get that license and become a teacher. So that gives us another option for the pathways to teachers. We've got TAs to teachers. Let's have substitutes to teachers. This company will offer that program.
Mr. Gentry, then I'm going to have Trey.
Mr. Craig alluded to this a few minutes ago, and I totally agree. Will part of this program provide immediate feedback to the principal electronically? That these are the substitutes that are, that have been requested or the, maybe not particularly by name. In other words, assurance that, that any or all or some number in between have in fact been filled on that day? Is that, is this part of the electronic process to, to circle back to the principal to keep him informed or her informed about the status of substitutes for that day?
If I'm understanding your, your, um, question, yes, they can go online and see. I've got five absences. Four have been, um, already filled. There's one more. And then at 6:45, 7:45, bam, the fifth one's been filled or there's still one out there. So yes, they will be able to see that.
Alright, we got, uh, Trey.
Dr. Williams, answer your question. I would say yes to it because, um, I think the more stakeholder table principals involved. I have a couple of questions as well because I was a teacher and I used Smart Find, if you understand what I'm saying. I know what they're talking about. But at the same exact time, um, one of my questions to it would be, I have used Smart Find and then come to find out the day I was out, there would be no sub in that spot, if you understand what I'm saying, when I used the system as well. So that's the questions I have even like down to spur of the moment, a teacher has to run home. Something happens, emergency, how does that work within the Kelly system? I would have as well. But I would say the more stakeholders we have at the table with this thing, the better off it'd be principals involved as well. And I love that conversation.
Alright, um, Mr. Craig, hold up. Let me, Mr. Craig, okay, hold on. I'm going to go to Dr. Williams and then I'm coming back to, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and then Chairman Simmons. I think at this point, we will pull this from the agenda for tomorrow night. Answer some of these questions, make contact with the rep and try to bring it back in the June meeting.
Alright. Alright, thank you, Re. Yeah?
I was just going to make a motion to table this and, and that's exactly what I was fixing to do. So if you're just going to bring it back to the June meeting and get us, just get more information and pull some principals and stuff in, then, uh, we go from there. That's fine.
You know, that's the purpose of this meeting, so good conversation tonight because we do want to be ready and answer all your questions. So thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Ms. Durant?
I'm on, okay. I, I just wanted to say about the money and the reason I was asking the question. Sometimes, and I just say this, you know, we're, we're in the business of education and sometimes it's just the cost of doing business, whether you saved or made. If you break even, it could be a win in our circumstance.
Correct.
Because how many school system in, in the state, and I'm just using this for example, has 35 schools? I mean, the, all of them don't. I know we're one. That's the only thing I was going to say about money. The other thing is, um, I did have this question and, and maybe they can put it together. Just like some teachers only want certain subs working for them. And they call them, they let them know a month ahead of time, things of that sort. That would be my question to the rep or, or whoever, um, in general, as a general question as, and I'm saying maternity leave and things of that. I know teachers have handpicked somebody because some teachers aren't going to turn anybody loose in the classroom. And I'm just.
Right. And that, and that's one thing they talked about is building, um, relationships in the community. Not just Cole being a, a provider there. It's building those relationships and understanding the needs. Like in the long-term sub situation, if we have a vacancy, some consistency there. And as you've indicated, if the teacher has to go out on maternity, any kind of FMLA, there could be periods of time, six to eight weeks or even more, where they would have a consistent person.
Alright, alright, thank you. No, we don't got to do the table because they're going to pull it. It's not on the, we're going to pull it from the agenda. Alright, um, the next order of business is 2023-24 Planning Budget. Uh, Dr. Freddie Williams, submit, and, uh, Ms. Erica Sessner.
Good evening, Chairman, Mr. Leach, Chairman Simmons, and board members. I provided, um, some copies tonight and in your packet, um, details that we know so far of the 2324 Planning Budget. If you want to start looking at that document on page one, I also, I always like to begin talking about the next year with a snapshot of where we are presently. So on page one, you'll see the current status for our budget for the 2223 school year. And we're just a shade under $400 million between all of our funding sources. With the bulk of that, of course, always is our state public school fund. And with the increase in COVID funding, our federal programs is, uh, just second. Then I wanted to show, um, how we summarize our budget resolution by the types of expenses, whether it's instruction, system-wide, ancillary services and so forth. And you'll see that breakdown. And then again, even further by object, the further we go in the budget code, it shows, um, more detail. So you can see the salaries, benefits and so forth there. Um, again, different ways to look at our budget and give us, um, more details from where we are currently. I also included the changes to our ADM within the last. I also included the changes to our ADM within the last five years. And as you'll see, this year is the first year we are projected to have an increase in our ADM. That is the first in a very long line of, we've continuously had a decreasing ADM, I would say, for the last 15 years. There should be some additional copies over there beside Mr. Lawson, maybe, no? Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Page one. Page one.
Yeah, she discussed the page one.
Everybody good? Okay. Any questions about where we are currently? Again, that is just a snapshot as we move forward. When we're looking at adopting our planning budget, what we know so far, we do not presently have a state budget. The House submitted their version of the budget on March the 30th. And so everyone's familiar with that process. The House version, the Senate will give us their version. We don't have an anticipated date at this point. We hope it's before June 30th, but we have seen it go beyond that date. And then they'll have a conference budget where they all meet as a group and determine what is going to be our final budget. So for that reason, you won't see any state planning allotments. Ever since the recession, the planning allotments have not been valid to include for budgeting purposes because they are subject to change pending any General Assembly action. With the House version of the budget, they are actually showing for the first time since I've been here, a decrease in the matching retirement rate. That is not what is set to go in place. But presently, our rate is 24 and a half percent. The House version would be 23.94%, so you would see a slight decrease there. But the health benefit presently is $7,397 per person. The House version has that health benefit going up to $7,654 a person. So we continue to see those increases, and you won't find that in your packet, I'm sorry. I'm just speaking from my other notes. As we move forward to the local planning, you'll see the anticipated local revenue. One of the biggest changes on that is the termination of a grant that we received for our CNAs. But we do have a plan to include the CNAs in our ERSI budget, at least for one more year. But you will see the differences that I've indicated there in the 2324 versus presently where we are. And I can answer any questions about that local revenue. Overall, it's about a $45,000 decrease from the present year. Mr. Avante, I think Dr. Manuel has a question.
I'm sorry. Dr. Manuel?
Mr., Ms. Erica?
Yes, ma'am.
On the local budget, page three of 10.
Okay.
Why are we paying bank service charges? They ought to be paying us some money.
No, ma'am, anytime you have an interest-bearing account, you're also going to have service charges.
So they pay us the interest, then turn around and charge us?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
So far, the interest, it does vary, but for the most part, the interest rates are really low. When the interest rates were slightly higher, of course, we'd get more interest than what we would pay out in service charges. But now, depending on the fluctuation of costs, that may or may not be the case.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And so pages three.
Hold up.
I'm sorry.
Hold on one second. We got Mr. Randy Lawson got a question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying at the end of page two, we're at $45,300 short?
No, it's not short, it's just saying that.
It could be.
We won't need that, we'll need that much less to operate. And we're not shorting anything, nothing is being cut from the budget.
This is inflation included in this, right?
There is a 5% increase and a benefit cost built into this, that is correct. But as you'll see, and I also wanted to point out, like, they're showing a decrease in Indian education. But what normally happens with Indian Ed is all the districts and other people who want to apply for the grant, apply. If they have additional funds left over, they'll send out a new allocation. And that has happened to us over the last few years. So that may not be a final number, but that's what we're working with now. And then just as I indicated with the interest, the rates are kind of changing a lot, so we've seen a decrease there. Indirect costs, we cannot charge indirect costs on things like HVAC projects and some of the other construction projects that are going on, so that's why you'll see a decrease there. And again, I mentioned the DHHS FFATA grant, that is for the CNAs. And as we've indicated, we're going to pick up that cost out of our ESR budget. And this budget, planning budget, will absolutely change because what's going to drive a lot of the salaries and other information here is, as I've indicated, the retirement rate, the health benefit, and the salary increases. So once we know those final numbers, then we can move forward. I will definitely be submitting, resubmitting, once we know a budget. I'll submit the 70-page document that includes line by line, like you see here, and it'll have those updated numbers. Is there any particular area that anyone wanted me to address with the local? This is important for us to send to the county so they can see some more detail of how our funds are spent. Most of our funding from local goes to fund our maintenance needs and utility costs. We have several grants included here. Charter school payments come out of our local budget, and as you know, those have increased as well with addition of, we have about 1,300 charter students, not only in our county, but we pay a total of about 12 different schools, some of them are outside of our county.
I have a question, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Avante.
I'm sorry, Dr. Manuel, I was trying to look at, look over this stuff. Dr. Manuel? Turn on your mic.
The local, I noticed IEAs here, so is, the way it works is it's still you pay IEA out of local and they reimburse you? Is that how that goes?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We use the G5 system, which is pretty standard, and we have to log in and request reimbursement for those expenses.
Thank you.
We also have the NC pre-K funds here, the, what used to be called More For Program with Ms. Jamie Flanagan. The funds we get for those NC pre-K slots are funded through here. Versus, we also get NC pre-K from Shining, yes, Shining Stars, it's Fund Six, that's not included here. That's a separate budget, as well as our Title One Fund pays for our traditional pre-K program as well. And that's in our federal grant. We have a score grant that we've been receiving, that's included, and that has the same, that's also reimbursable through G5. It's handled the same way as Indian education. But of the budget, as you can see, $11.8 million is for our maintenance, which includes the utilities and those salaries. That is by far the biggest area of spending. We have things that have been continued every year, like project graduation, arts. Those are things that have always been a part of that local budget, and we continue to support. Any questions I can answer? We have a nurses' grant, we get $250,000 to employ five nurses. It does not cover all of their salaries, but it certainly helps make sure we have those nurses in place. Sniffy, as it's called for abbreviation.
Mrs. Terry, got a question?
So, excuse me, I saw the gap in state, in state funding and the one in local funding, but they're on different pages. Do we have like a total, like a bottom line, what the gap, that gap's gonna be?
You're talking about the last two pages, based on our request?
Just overall.
Once, we will, once we have the state budget, we will. But we already know, and if we want to move forward to the last, the last page on this document, the page 16, talks about PRC 003, which I have said like a broken record in every year. That's where we pay our custodian, substitute teachers, and school office staff. You can see in the 08, 09 school year, we actually got more money in that allocation than we did in the current year we're in. That's really unheard of, and that formula changed from when the recession hit in 08 and 06, 08, and it has never recovered. So I included since the 13, 14 school year, how much money we've either had to pay from local or with ABC transfers, where we take other state funds and pour into 003. And you can see how much that is. The odd year there, the 412, was the year of COVID, so we did not have the substitute teacher costs. Other than that, we've at least been right at $2 million in every year. So that is where the biggest gap for the state funding is, $2.5 million average, based on that data, Mr. Terry.
Okay, I didn't notice the 08, 09.
Yes.
I saw that minus, so we're looking at gaps in possibly local and state?
Right now, we're looking at state funding, 003 has always been an issue. I'm right, we don't, we're all gonna probably have to use fund balance next year to sustain the $15 an hour. You know, we didn't get any state money to cover local salaries, and that has been a big hit. And the increasing retirement and hospital matching, we don't automatically get any adjustments for that. We have to make that work with our existing dollars.
So, so my question is, we're looking at minus 45 local for now?
We're looking at, in the next year, it will cost us that much less to operate at the same rate. It's not that there's a shortage that we're gonna have to fill. It's not going to take us that much to operate in the next year because of the reduction of some of the salaries for the grant, and I have all of those.
So we're looking at that much as a savings? Possibly.
Possibly, you could look at that, at it that way.
And this resolution, is this something that we're going to be asked to approve tomorrow night?
Yes, sir, what this says is that we can continue operating in the 23, 24 school year until a budget is adopted.
And that's typical?
That is typical, yes. What's not typical is when we had to wait till December to get a budget, and that's the reason for this document.
In the past, it's been like October, right? September, October?
Well, I mean, we've had it all over the place. Sometimes we have it in place by July 1. August is, August, September is kind of the average when we get a budget.
So yeah, even October's a little bit late.
Right, so once we get that, then I will move forward with submitting the traditional budget resolution that I have done already this year, and it will have more detail once we know those final numbers.
Got you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So again, Erica, we are projected on our planning to increase by 105 students.
That's correct.
We know it's gonna be more than that, but at this point, the projection is 105.
That's correct, based on, and so what we're looking at there is, DPI has something for ADM that's called the best one of two. And so they have what your actual versus projected is, and they will fund you at the higher. So right now, our higher projected is $20,068. But if within the first two months of the school year, we go above and beyond that, they will increase our allocations as well. They will also decrease it if we don't, so it goes both ways.
Dr. Manuel, you got a question? You on, you was on? Okay, you all got a question? I'm sorry, Mr. Craig?
Ms. Erica, this is page 15, is that's our plan for next year, that that's the part that goes to the commissioners, right?
That's correct, so I wanted to get to that part. Thank you, Mr. Craig, yes, sir.
Let me make a comment, and then I'll let you go. When, when, when you get to that part, just want to reemphasize, this is what we're asking for. We hadn't got it in a long time, and we're doing work at schools. And sometime people say, well, why are you spending this money on these schools? But we're not just patching these things now, we're trying to fix what is there. If it's a roof that's leaking, it's being fixed because it's easier to fix that roof and when there's not money to build a school. And just making sure people understand that. And then I will say with what is here, we've been asking for this since I've been on the board. And, and we need some help with these funds, and I know when you go there, you will express that. But this is some of the same stuff we've been asking for, and I'm just saying we need some help. If it's not all, at least some. Now, do you have anything else you were gonna cover?
I was just gonna go over the details on page 15. Previously, I think we're going on our sixth year now, PSRC paid our classroom teachers a 5% supplement. The state, the, look, excuse me, the county commissioners gave us an additional 1%, so we moved that to 6%. And we've been assured that we will get, continue to pay that at 6%, but that's what the first line is. The second line is the gap in the state funding that I mentioned for PRC 003, and it's the $2.5 million, that is detailed on the back page. That's where that dollar amount comes from. And then we're talking about moving, continuing to have an SRO at each school. We have used our O69 funds this year, but it is not sustainable to continue to do that long-term unless we get additional funding, and it's not likely we will. So we're making that request to also help offset that cost at 1.75. That's a total immediate need of $5.2 million. Also listed here is for school slash bus safety equipment, $2 million. We were awarded the safety grant through Mr. Bobby, and we're buying cameras, bus cameras, dual-entry systems, and bus radios. But as we all know, we need something sustainable, because once we put those in place, they're not going to last forever. And as we move forward, that's not going to include all of our buses. We kind of had to phase that in, so we'd like to expand that program. And then finally, we've discussed in the past, but we have not gotten the funding to increase our teacher supplement to 10%. That would cost the district an almost additional $4.3 million, and that's part of that request as well. But we would not be able to afford that without the additional funds from the county. We use low-well to pay our teacher supplement, and without those funds, we wouldn't be able to pay a supplement at all.
All right, all right, we good?
Ms. Craig, before you put the motion up, can you talk to us briefly in terms of low-well? Clarifying that, the planning allotment showed us at a negative.
Yes, sir.
Of 1.7 million.
Yes, sir.
But now that's deformed, talk about that, please.
So I don't know if anyone's ever seen the low-well formula. It's about four pages long, and there's data sets from the Bureau, the U.S. Census Bureau, the county tax office, there's about five different areas where data gets pulled in to work on this formula. Our planning for next year had us losing $1.7 million in our low-well funding. And other districts, just about every district that received low-well was going to get a deduction. So we all said, wait a minute, something looks wrong, asked for a recalculation on that. We did receive that, and now we're going to get an increase of $193,000 because they said an inaccurate data set was used in that initial calculation. One of the reasons that amount is not higher is it actually shows our poverty percentage went up. So less people are in the poverty range, which is positive, but has an impact on that low-well funding. We still rank one of the lower ones in the county at 58%, but most districts are in the 60s and up. But that was a big hit, I didn't know how I was gonna explain $1.7 million because low-well is really the gap from our low per pupil amount from our local district, which we don't have the ability to increase funding like other districts do because our property values are much lower comparatively to other counties. So the ability to pay is low, and that is all part of that calculation. But that has been corrected. We'll get final numbers again once we have a state budget, so it could increase from that based on the salaries.
All right, Mr. Craig?
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the 2324 Planning Budget as presented.
It's been properly motioned, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's gotta go to the board, yes.
Go to the board tomorrow night. Yes.
Motion taken before the board, yes.
Point of clarity, does that also include the continuing resolution?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it also tends to continue resolution to bring before the board tomorrow, all right? Mr. Terry?
For our, for our, for our local funds, where do we rank statewide in funding effort?
I'm sorry. Yeah?
Based on a local finance study that does that comparison for us, we rank 1/14th out of 1/15. Swain County is the only one lower than us.
In funding effort?
In funding effort, I'm sorry, I thought you said funding. In funding efforts, we rank kind of in the middle. Because like I said, I think it's about 60- we rank kind of in the middle because like I said, I think it's about 65, somewhere in that range because our ability, our funding ability to generate additional revenue is low. But in the, the county funds us at a high enough rate where we never have an issue getting our low wealth. That's all part of that calculation as well. So yes, I believe it's 65.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good in funding effort.
In effort, yes, sir. That's correct.
Saying that, that means that as far as what, what the county commissioners could give us, that we're doing fairly well.
Correct.
Based on the calculation.
Based on their options they have to generate additional revenue.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Is that it? Been properly motioned, the second. All in favor? I have it. We adjourn. Thank you.